Good.
Yeah.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Genoa Township Trustees. Today's date is September ninth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is six thirty P. M. A full and accurate account of this meeting video and audio can be found at W. 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 dot Genoa T. W. P. dot com. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Antonet.
Here.
Trustee Vaughn.
Here.
Trustee McMurray.
Here.
With us this evening is also Donna Batten, Assistant Fiscal Officer, H. R., Lauren Fitzpatrick, Director of Roads, Bridges and Grounds and Parks, uh, Police Chief James McMillan, Fire Chief Joe Ponzi, Director of Zoning and Development, Joe Schaefer, Township Administrator, Paul Wise. Just, and, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't look up. Also Communications Director, Leslie. Um, at this time, for those able, stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, so I'm going to switch the order around a little bit for those in the public that want to make comment, don't want to sit through our exciting meeting. Uh, we will open this up to public comment. Do they need to be sworn in?
Uh-uh.
No. So anybody? Hi.
Amy Nettles. Hi, I'm Mallory with the Health District. Um, just a few things going on. Um, our mobile clinic will be driving around the county between September and November. So if you'd like more information on that, I can provide that. Um, also want to remind everyone, flu season is approaching and, um, the Delaware County Fair is coming up and the Health District will be administering flu shots at the fair. Um, and also I know you guys, for your upcoming festival, the two food trucks that you guys are getting, um, have already been inspected by us and all of that. Um, but the week of the festival is my assigned week, so I just wanted to extend out, if you would like to have an inspector there doing inspections day of, you can reach out to me. I'd be happy to do that for you guys, but, um, that was all I had for you guys, really. Just those things, I wanted to extend that offer, so, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Now's your time. No?
My name's Frank Dantonio. I see that the, um, e-bikes is on the agenda again this evening. I don't know if you're considering a resolution or not because that was not included in the agenda, but since it's on the meet, uh, the agenda for a third time, I thought I'd talk about it for the third time. Wanted to correct a statement that the Genoa Administration previously made regarding e-bikes. I contacted the Franklin County Metro Parks and they do not ban all e-bikes. It's my understanding that they did make that comment previously in one of the meetings. In very limited situations, um, all bikes are banned in certain parks, in certain portions of certain parks, just like they ban all dogs, all pets from certain portions of their parks and certain parks. But they have more than twenty mi- twenty, two hundred and thirty miles in twenty parks and they do not have any problem with e-bikes or bikes, which is many, many multiples than what we do. So I was wondering how many docu- actual documented accidents have occurred with e-bikes in Genoa? Does anybody know?
Chief, you got any record of?
I don't know, I don't know any off the top of my head and I don't, I wouldn't have that number without, without looking it up.
Do we know how many actual EMS runs with e-bikes have been reported?
My answer would have to be the same as Chief McMillan's. Without doing some research into that, I would not have that number if there are any.
When working in the parks, has Genoa's mowing crews used the standard traditional flashing lights on their mowers, placed orange cones on the pathways, or erected orange signage on the pathways? Is that their standard practice?
No.
No.
For all of those?
Correct.
Has the Parks Advisory Committee, uh, reviewed this particular issue banning of the e-bikes and provided a recommendation?
Uh, I don't know that we can answer that. There's nobody from the Parks Advisory at the meeting.
We have discussed it. We've not went as far as, you know.
We've discussed the issue. We haven't went as far as voting on anything.
So there's no opinion from the Parks Committee then?
I shared their opinion on one of the first meetings and they were against e-bikes within the park acreage.
You just said that there's been no opinion by the parks. You said you discussed it, but there was no. I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
I said we did not vote on it. They just voiced their opinions.
So there's no official position by the Parks Advisory Committee? E-bikes are not the problem. Banning e-bikes is not the solution. People are the problem. Okay? So maybe a better idea is to post speed limits with some restrictions rather than banning them. Please don't discriminate against the e-bikes and punish all e-bikes merely because of a minor few issues. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is fiscal officer report.
Good evening, trustees. The first item on the agenda this evening would be approval of the regular August twelfth, um, trustee meeting minutes as well as the August twentieth special trustee meeting minutes.
I move to approve the following trustee meeting minutes. August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting. August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, special trustee meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. None? Roll.
Trustee McMurray.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes.
Trustee Antonet.
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to our August financials. Um, all accounts have been reconciled. We undered the month at thirty-two million, eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-six cents. Of that, the primary checking account is at eight million, five hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. Our investments with Fifth Third are at nineteen million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. And Star Ohio Investments are three million, eight hundred, seven thou- excuse me, three million, eight hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-five cents. I'll have both of these at the end of the meeting for your approval. Or, excuse me, for your signatures. Uh, moving on, we have several supplemental appropriations that I need to get, uh, the board's approval on. We had, um, we ran short with auditing services, um, for a hundred and twenty dollars. Um, so I'll need to have, um, those monies moved from the General Fund Administration, B. W. C. account into auditing services. Um, another appropriation within the General Fund, um, is going to be for administration medical costs for the rest of the year. Um, and that money is being moved from our contingency fund. The Maintenance Department came up short on tax collection fees. At the end of August, we received our second half settlement from the Auditor's Office and I came up short eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-three cents, um, on the tax collection fees, which I assume is based upon the, um, the increase in new approved levy from the fall. We just didn't make those amendments to the appropriations when we appropriate, when we presented them at the, um, beginning of the year. Um, and then, um, we need an additional nine thousand dollars for the township events, um, for the additional monies, um, which, you know, moving everything to Freeman Farms. Um, those monies will be transferred from the contingency fund as well. And then later on the agenda, we have cemetery software update. And to make that happen, I would need to move nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from the contingency fund into improvement of sites for equipment purchases.
I'm, I've moved to approve the retroactive supplemental appropriation amendments as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. None? Roll.
Trustee McMurray.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes.
Trustee Antonet.
Yes. Motion passed.
Okay. And then I have a purchase order. Um, it stems from one of our supplemental appropriations. It is a forty thousand dollar annual blanket to get us through the rest of the year for administration medical costs.
I move to approve the blanket purchase order in the amount of forty thousand dollars for administration, medical hospitalization. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. None? Roll.
Trustee McMurray.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes.
Trustee Antonet.
Yes. Motion passed.
Okay. And the third and final item are twenty, twenty, excuse me, I have twenty-five on the template, but it's actually the twenty, twenty-six amounts and rates have been approved by the Budget Commission and presenting those to you this evening for your, uh, approval and acceptance.
I move to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. None? Roll.
Trustee McMurray.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes.
Trustee Antonet.
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay. Next at this time, we'll go to trustee comment. Anyone?
Yeah. One couple of things. First, there's a Delaware County Township Association meeting this Thursday. The topic, one of the topics is going to be a mutual wage shared use agreement that I brought to the board about two years ago. Maybe it was just last year, time flies. And we discussed it, decided not to pass it. And of the eighteen townships in Delaware County, only four have passed it because many trustees had questions. So at Thursday's meeting, it's going to be Alex McCarthy, who is the Director of E. M. A. in Delaware County, and Chris Betts, who's from the Prosecutor's Office. And they're going to explain where E. M. A. stops and where this mutual wage shared use agreement would start. Things like, there isn't an emergency and there's a load of gravel that was dumped in the middle of the road. What happens if, for instance, Plum Road is half ours, half Berkshire's? I know we split it east-west, but let's say, uh, the cutoff is at Rome Corners. What if we're clearing debris on our side of, of Plum and a hundred yards away, we see a branch that is in technically Berkshire's half? Common sense would say, let's just go clean it up. We're already there. Um, that technically wouldn't be allowed without a shared use agreement. So it happens. Uh, right now, there is, isn't that type of agreement between the townships, but Chris and Alex are going to discuss it more on Thursday. Also, we have Tony Terowski from O. Dot, who's going to talk about, you know, what's going on in Delaware County roads-wise. So be a good meeting if it's at Kingston Township, Paul. Um, second, Paul and I attended the Southeastern Delaware County Coalition meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was in Berkshire Township and we, the New Albany Company spoke. It was an interesting presentation by the New Albany Company. It's, from what I gathered, Sunberry is using them for some of their projects. And it looked like if Galena isn't there, looking to build a relationship, just FYI, that's what happened in our backyard. And finally, I know Mallory didn't talk about it, but, uh, Garrett Giozy spoke at the, uh, Genoa Township Business Association meeting last week and Delaware County Health District is doing a tire drive on September eighteenth from nine P. M., sorry, some, um, nine A. M. to twelve P. M. at, at Delaware County Fairgrounds. So if anybody has any tires that they'd like to recycle, it is free to Delaware County, um, residents. So FYI, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Yep. I do.
Trustee?
Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that on Wednesday, there is a Galena Village Council meeting at six P. M. regarding the redevelopment of Arrowhead. Um, currently, there's four divergences that they're looking at, uh, related to building height, density, side yard setbacks, and street curvature. Um, so I don't know if folks are aware, but this is, uh, proposed mixed-use development, high-density. Um, so get ready for additional traffic in our area. But if anyone is interested in attending and learning more, um, that is at the Galena Village Hall at six P. M. Um, also looking forward to seeing everyone on, uh, this Saturday for the fishing day. My daughter is looking forward to doing a little fishing, so we will be there. And then just right before the meeting, um, I was looking at some news and I saw that Jerome Township has hit pause on data centers while officials consider growth. Um, so I thought that that was kind of interesting, um, that, you know, things are kind of shifting a little bit, uh, when it comes to these data centers. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I just have one issue comment, uh, and I'd like to propose to the trustees, uh, in light of some emails from, um, G. T. double R. D. reviewing our proposed zoning code revisions, um, that put what appears to be a significant effort into providing some, maybe some recommendations. Um, and I talked to Joe about this briefly. I would like to propose as we nominate one of us three as a champion to meet with concerned residents. Can be any residents that's, anyone that's concerned or wants to get involved in this review, um, to meet. Um, try to wrap your head around, um, what they're proposing and if there's any merit in it, then bring it to the Board of Trustees in a more formal setting. So any volunteer?
So I just, I have a question. Um, something that I thought worked well, um, and I could see it potentially working in this setting too, was how we kind of had the roundtable discussion around the park. Um, so I think that might be a good way to kind of navigate some of this. Um, versus, yeah, yeah, the playground, the McNamara Playground. Um, versus, you know, of course, I'll meet with constituents. I've met with some over the last few weeks regarding the, um, the zoning resolution, but I, I don't know. I think that if we did more, maybe a roundtable, that might be a little bit more productive. I'd rather have all three of us there, um, just because we can all hear what the residents have to say versus one and you're summarizing. I, I too like the format that was used for the background. It worked well. Um, the other thing too, because I, I got the same email from G. T. R. R. D. is I'd be more than happy to, to work with Joe, um, you know, kind of navigating through this in, you know, any way that I can help support him. Happy to kind of take that up and run with it.
Okay. So you are nominated.
Thank you.
We're going to leave it up to you to schedule, arrange, meet with, and figure out, am I on the right track with this? I mean, this isn't, and concern.
Yeah. As long as it's one single trustee discussing items with the public, that's allowable. But if you get two or more of you in one room, that's a chaotic meeting.
Have a formal meeting. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So, um, if you're willing to do this, I'd like to see you meet, set up a meeting, invite however format you need to do, sit down, try to dissect their recommendations, involve Joe, and then come together and if you can pro- provide your opinion after reviewing these, especially since you are, have a legal background. Um, and then we can do the, the roundtable.
I like that.
All right. So we had a meeting scheduled for September eighteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
I think fifteenth.
Monday.
Yeah. Fifteenth, fifteenth. It is the fifteenth, yeah.
You won't be ready by then.
No.
So how do we reschedule that?
Not sure we can.
Oh, we have to open the meeting and reschedule?
So, yeah, you have two options here. Um, if you cancel the meeting, we could schedule a date further out, but we would have to re-advertise and meet all the ten-plus day requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other option is you could open the meeting on Monday and sort of like we did when we initiated, basically open the meeting and then automatically just continue it to whatever date you decide on the record. If you'd make that decision and announce it on the record as part of the public hearing, we don't have to do the advertisement. You have to come here for a possibly short meeting on Monday, but we are all sort of planning on doing that anyway.
All right. So I'm okay with holding the meeting on Monday because you might gather information that's valuable by Monday.
Okay.
I don't know. Maybe you can, maybe you can, maybe you can't. But let's, let's keep it open.
Okay.
And if you feel like you need more time, then we can continue the meeting. Does that sound right?
Yeah. Absolutely.
All right. Awesome. Okay. Paul?
Good evening, board. I have a couple of items this evening. First off is a grant application that we're filing for Ohio Public Works Commission. Uh, this is for Ro- Plum Road from Three Bs and K. down to Rome's Corner. That's the section of the Plum Road that the Township maintains. The other part is Berkshire Township. We want to pave our part, uh, of that roadway and it's a mill and fill. So what the projected cost of the project is six hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred dollars. We're applying for, uh, a grant of four hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Delaware County will pitch in nineteen point five percent grant for another a hundred and fifteen thousand, eighty-nine dollars. And so the Township's portion of this would be for the, for one point four seven miles of road, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. So I asked the board support this evening to pass this legislation to, uh, have O. P. W. C. consider Plum Road.
Great. Nice work. Move to authorize Genoa Township Administrator to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Last I heard, Orange and Berkshire Townships were doing this as well. Is this a com- are they?
I'm not sure if they're, this is their project. I know they have other projects that they're working on where they're diverting their money. So we may have the freshest section of road if it's approved.
Got it. Thank you.
I actually have one question as well. Trustee Antonet.
Yeah. Sure.
The, um, fund that would we, um, that we would be drawing these from would be the Maintenance Fund? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Good question. Any further discussion? Roll.
Trustee McMurray.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes.
Trustee Antonet.
Yes. Motion passed.
Uh, my second update is we received a little bit of, of good news. Um, last year, the Township received funds from the, um, Barbara Murto Trust. Uh, a large donation went to the K. Nine Fund and the other part went to firefighters, uh, for their usage. The, the, the estate has been settled, so there's remaining funds to be distributed to Genoa Township. I asked the board to approve the donations from the Trust of Barbara Murto in the amount of fourteen hundred, fifty-seven dollars, forty-nine cents for both the Police Department and the same amount, uh, for the Fire Department.
I move to graciously accept the following donations from the Trust of Barbara A. Murto. Fourteen hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents for the Genoa Township Police Department K. Nine Unit and fourteen hundred dollars, fourteen hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents for the Genoa Township Fire Department EMS Services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. None? Roll.
Trustee McMurray.
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn.
Yes.
Trustee Antonet.
Yes. Motion passed. Police Chief, you're up.
Good evening, board. I actually have a couple of extra items that's not on the agenda, if the board would be okay with that. They've, they've recently popped up since the agenda came out, but in the interest of timeliness, I thought we would, we would go over it. The first one is dealing with the, uh, police contracts. At the end of the year, um, both the officer and the supervisor contracts are set to expire. Due to us having a levy on the ballot in November, we typically do not start negotiations until we reach that point, since we, at this point, as you guys certified today, have no funds for next year. The police union has reached out to, um, Dave Rebenhoff and requested a, requested that both parties agree to waive one section of the contract. And what that has to deal with, there's a section in the, uh, contract clause that states that anything dealing with money that would be approved after the first of the year does not have to be awarded until the first of the next year. So if we didn't agree to a contract until January second of two thousand twenty-six, we would not have to fund any, anything that had money until two thousand twenty-seven. But since we're not going to start negotiations until probably mid-November, both parties thought that it would be a good idea to do that. So Dave has said that this is very common practice and has requested, uh, us to look at that. So what I wanted to at least, uh, make the board aware of it and ask if there was any issue with them, uh, with the board and us moving forward with Dave and kind of creating that, that M. O. U. or waiving that one section of the clause, if you're okay with us exploring that.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I think it makes sense.
Would it be the, uh, would it be the preference of the board to present it to you then in October with what, what the wording is and go from there?
Yes.
Just, we will work with, uh, Paul and I will work with Dave on that. Um, the second thing that wasn't on the agenda but came up last month and I did some research, I wanted to be able to answer that question. Last month, you guys approved the intoxilizer purchase to, the breathalyzer. And Trustee McMurray, you specifically asked if that included all the training for, for the team and at the time, I thought we would have to pay for it. The Ohio Department of Health still does all of the training, which is what they had done traditionally and they're going to continue that. So that training is provided free of charge. Um, what we've talked with the Board of Health, because our training room specs meet what they need for size, technology, and outlets, we can host it. So we're working with, uh, with the O. D. H. to, to host a couple of trainings next year. While it would have been free anyway, driving to Reynoldsburg, Hilliard, Grove City, even further for the team, it's a lot easier to do it here, so we are hosting that. So there'll be no additional cost for that.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Um, another thing we talked about last week, trustees, you approved, it was a little over twenty-two thousand dollars to equip the cruiser we're purchasing to replace the other one. We had talked about, because we were going to go back to afford potentially being able to use some of the old equipment, what we did in the last month was get a more accurate price. What we came back with was we're actually going to get a lower price for the equipment, but we're also adding a new radar unit in for the cruiser, because we didn't initially quote it, but it could be replaced, the striping package and a, it's about a twenty-five hundred dollar infrared camera that we have on some cruisers, but not all. Adding all of that in, we're still going to save five thousand dollars on the purchase of the equipment. So we've added three new pieces, still saving five grand of what we, what we approved last year. So wanted to, to point that out to the board. And then we just got notified a couple of hours ago that, so a couple of months ago, Deputy Chief Denman came into the board and requested permission to seek a grant for, uh, replacement of our vests for two thousand twenty-six. Two thousand twenty-six is our biggest year. We have, that's when we have most of the vests expire. So he started, that was actually one of the very first grants he's worked on since we've, um, we, me, assigned him to this task. And we're, we, uh, we were notified, we were notified, uh, a couple of hours ago that he was, he requested a, I don't remember exactly what he, how much he requested, but the state awarded him a seventy-five percent reimbursement on every vest.
Uh-huh.
So two thousand twenty-six is our biggest year to purchase them. The state is going to reimburse us up to seventy-five percent of it, which they've agreed to over, it's a little over eight thousand dollars.
That's great.
In the coming months, when I have a little more information, again, we just got this a couple of hours ago. Finance hasn't even heard this. Uh, when we get everything, when we get everything in order, I'm going to have to come back to the board and ask, because the purchase will be so large upfront to move some money around, knowing that we're going to get that check back from the state. And then, still one more that's not on the agenda, a couple of. Yeah, I gotta look. I got papers everywhere. Um, several years ago, we used to have, we used to have numbers on the top of our cruisers when we actually had cars, the Crown Vics. When we moved to S. U. V.s, we just stopped putting them on the top of the cars, a couple hundred bucks per car that we weren't spending. With everybody going to drones and using aerial support now. With everybody going to drones and using aerial support now, we're finding that we're having, we're having issues identifying cruisers from these different video feeds. What we'll do a lot of times is we'll send the drone operator, and let's say we want to use Car 60. We'll tell the drone operator, "Head northeast off of Cruiser 60, and that's the field we need you to search." Well, every single cruiser looks the same. They're all black, they've all got red and blue lights flashing everywhere, so we're going to explore putting those numbers back on the top of the SUV. Nobody will ever notice them unless you're up in the air, but since we are putting a change on the cruisers, I wanted to let the trustees know that we're, that's the reason why we're going to add them back in. For years, we just cut them out because it saved a couple bucks. Now to my item on the agenda. [laughing] Next year is Genoa Township's 50th anniversary. A couple of years ago, Fire had their 50th anniversary, and they did a few things that the police thought were neat. They did some stickers on their car, and I think decals on their front door. So earlier this year, I put a, I put a small team together and told them to explore some options and see if there was something they could do to recognize the 50th anniversary next year. And the team came up with a couple really neat designs. One of them that they really like, and they've showed me recently, it's the number 50 in gold, because that's your 50-year anniversary. Genoa Township has, police have had four different shoulder patches in our 49, soon-to-be-50-year, 50-year time. With the digital graphics and the things they can do nowadays, they actually have put all four patches in that, in that zero of the number 50. And a couple of things that they wanted to do, and again, I wanted to point out to the board in case there were any real objections and to make sure that you knew it before it happened, to do a decal on the car, I think like Fire did on their, on their truck, so we would put one on each of the black cruisers and that gold would really stand out. Do, maybe do a couple of door decals. And they're exploring buying some stickers to place over some of our giveaways that we currently have, because we have a lot of the different cups and balls. And we're trying to make sure we do it so it doesn't look bad when you put it over there, but symbolizes that it came out for just the 50-year number 50 and not every other year. We're up to purchase some of the challenge coins we give out at some of our different events, so we thought, we'll look at, since we have to purchase some anyway, maybe getting that very special design, so it's sort of a limited edition thing that you might get. And then potentially looking at maybe getting the officers who work during that 50-year year, so all of our team that works next year, our commemorative badge saying that they've worked during that 50-year mark. So, just some things to commemorate our 50-year service. We really thought it was neat when Fire did it, and so the team jumped on it and wanted to pass that on and get it to the board, because you, again, have seen no objections to it. Maybe have that gold sticker will kind of stick out on the back to let everybody know that we've been around for 50. And that is the end of my agenda, unless you have some questions?
Are you sure?
Well, well, I was going to ask. I know we're going to talk about e-bikes, and I've done a lot of research, it's under maintenance. Would you, would the board be okay if I just covered some of the legal things I've dug up before we get into that?
The next item on the agenda, so that's fine. I just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
About the stickers, are they permanent?
On the cars?
Yeah.
So, no, what the team has done, because I asked the same thing, I said, "Well, maybe do magnets?"
Yeah.
And they're worried the magnets are going to fall off, people are going to steal them, so they've worked with the company, they're meant to go on the car, and then they can apply a little bit of heat and it'll bring them right off.
Yep.
And I'm taking the team's word for it, that there will be no marks on the cruiser when it's said and done. So I guess this is not uncommon to do, if you want to switch some decals around. You know, every time a sheriff changes over, they have to change that decal, so it's, apparently it's been done before, so the stickers are a little bad.
I can attest to, because my company car has our corporate logo on it, and we just heated it off and already traded it in, so yeah, that's real.
So they're meant to do that. I think the decals that we put on permanently are a little bit, a little bit sturdier, not meant to necessarily heat gun off, so this particular version of it is meant to come off after that year.
Okay.
So I guess, no, I'm not done with my agenda. So, you know, again, when we started talking about these different e-bikes, and I'm actually going to talk a little bit, there's, everybody's using the term e-bike, but there's about three or four different versions of these vehicles. So even, when we started talking about them, our discussion has even changed a little bit from what we've been thinking about, or the board's been thinking about as whether or not we ban these vehicles, there were some talks about potentially the Level 3 bikes, and then speed limit signs. So I wanted to, I wanted to go through and make sure, to educate myself, since it's changing and passing on to the board. And as I was, I was telling a couple people I were looking at it, the definitions and laws have changed as late as June 30th of this year. So again, these are rapidly updating vehicles. So when we talk about these, there's actually, there's an e-bike, there's a micro-mobility vehicle, and there's a motorized bike. All have different rules and different definitions. The micro-mobility vehicles are ones that are under 100 pounds with a set of handlebars, and they can have an electric or human power. Those remind me of the Limes and those ride shares you see downtown. They, if an e-bicycle fits this, they could be a micro-mobility, but e-bikes have their own definition. So those Razor scooters and those little two-wheel things that we see with those, that's what a micro-mobility is. And then, an e-bike is essentially a bicycle with a motor. There's three different levels to it, and they all have different, they all have different rules. All electric bikes, and I think some of the citizens have pointed this out to us as well, they have to have a permanently affixed label, and that label has to have what class it is, whether it's a 1, 2, or 3, the top assisted speed that it's manufactured to go, and the wattage of the motor. It doesn't say where it has to be, it just says permanently affixed in a prominent location. I've tried to look at some manufacturer specs, and I don't, I don't see consistency across the board, so maybe some are under the undercarriage, some might be in the neck or the tongue. And then when you get to a Level 3 bicycle, it must have a speedometer. It's illegal, just like it is with other vehicles, to modify any of that without notating that across the board. A Class 1 and a Class 3 are created so that the motor will only engage when the pedestrian is pedaling. A Class 2 will engage the motor without the individual pedaling. So that one, that one seems to charge up and be able to utilize, so if we see people riding on it without pedaling and everything's to that manufacturer's specs, it should be a Level 2. When you start talking about where they're allowed, so a Level 3, Level 3 bikes are banned on all paths that are set aside for exclusive use of bicycles or shared-use paths, unless that path is within or adjacent to a highway. Administrator Wise and I were talking, and State Route 3 is defined as a highway, State Route 3 highway in the state of Ohio, so I believe that a Level 3 bike would be allowed on that because it's adjacent to that. So, every other path in Genoa Township that I can think of off the top of my head, the Level 3s are already banned by law. And I know at some point that came up in discussion about a potential resolution to that, but the law's covering that for us. Nobody can operate any of the e-bikes on, on paths that are strictly for mountain biking, hiking, or any other single-track uses. And I thought about Sharmar Ridge, our Lewis Center mountain bike path that specifically says that, that all by, all e-bikes are banned on that already by the Ohio Advice Code. And then, I highlighted this section for potential discussion, or has been historically reserved for non-motorized use. If our parks, and at various times, I know the park, some of our parks have had no motorized vehicles. So, I don't, that may be something that we bring in legal counsel for to determine if that is covered, if we don't want to look at a resolution, but if you, if it's deemed to have been reserved for non-motorized use, that may be covered under the Ohio Advice Code. And then, and then you can get into the Class 3s. Nobody under 16 is allowed to be on a Class 3, and anybody on a Class 3 has to be on a helmet, has to wear a helmet. So these are all covered under, under the Ohio Advice Code and things that are enforceable with citations. When you talk about low-speed micro-mobility devices, so that is its own specific portion, and then you also have the bicycles. The e-bikes have been added to everything in the ORC that I can find. If it says bicycle, it says e-bike. So, they're allowed on the road, but they're required to follow all the laws, or citations can be issued. And then you have your low-speed micro-mobility devices that are also allowed to be operated on public streets, sidewalks, shared-use paths, and operated on any portion of the roadway set aside for bicycles. So they, too, can be operated across the board on all of those. If we start, the one, when I started reading this, something that I thought about, if we start looking at restricting the usage of these micro-mobility devices and e-bikes on paths and sidewalks, they're all legally allowed to be on the roadway, we start putting them out there if we don't do a complete ban. So, that is what I've come up with, and that is, that is current as of, as of June 30th. Again, I don't, I can't tell you exactly what laws were changed, changed as late as the end of the summer, but they have been updating all of these sections. I didn't dig really into a lot of the motorized bikes. I do know there are some of those, a motorized bike is, it has a pedal assist start typically like a moped with a piston-driven engine, but I know that there's been a lot more updates on what seem like those mini bikes. They're not really a dirt bike, but they have that combustible engine. I don't know if they all have pedal starts, and so that still seems like maybe they haven't caught up with that, because that always seems like some younger, some younger people on those, because they're small. Again, so we have the Level 3 that's banned on everything but that path. We could look at adding a speed limit factor on some of the paths, but the one thing, as somebody who has ran speed and radar for a lot of years, specifically when, let's say we use the micro-mobilities, if somebody's doing 18 miles an hour on the sidewalk, which would be legal if we made a 20 mile an hour speed limit and the law says they can ride on the sidewalk, and comes past you when you're walking your dog at 18 miles an hour, you're going to think they did 35 or 40. So it's going to be very hard to visually gauge that, and that may create even more, there could be even more of a perception problem that maybe they are doing 18 miles an hour, which is still pretty fast on a bike, on one of those bicycles. And we could look at, and a suggestion to the board, we are coming into the latter part of the fall and winter. That's going to inherently slow people down because of the weather. We could really work on, I could work, I could work with Director Strater, and we could create some sort of messaging system that we use on our Facebook pages to help educate the public on, here's the laws, here's what we're expecting, here's what we're going to work to follow. Maybe put our newsletters, our e-newsletters out through the fall and the winter, and try to work to have a better educated community before, before the spring, so. I know that that's on the agenda for the next level. I wanted to pass out some of that updated laws that I could find and give the board, so we're educated across the board, because we have changed this discussion in a couple different paths since we started and want to make sure we hit all those points.
Wow, that's really useful.
Thank you, Chief, for doing all that homework.
So.
Really useful and complicated.
So, unless you need anything, I will conclude.
[laughing] Thank you.
Oh, in light of that, I don't know that you need to report much.
Right.
I would just ask if you're okay with Chief's suggestion about timelines and-
Just to bounce off of what Chief McMillan has shared with us this evening, we do have it marked in the parks that no unauthorized motor vehicles on the trails. So that's something that you'll want to visit. Do we leave them, or do we remove them? Which direction do we need to go with that? Something that I would like to see taken in consideration, not waiting on next year to roll around, is, I've listened to your guys' concerns and comments, as well as our concerns and comments of our residents, and taking all of them into deep consideration. I would like to see a park rule that states if they're under the age of 16, they need to have a parent with them if they're on any kind of motorized bicycle. That's the problem we're running into, is the young kids unsupervised. So that is the problem, the biggest problem within the park. I'm not saying an adult never does that, but we do have, the majority of the issue is underage children. If they're 16, they're most likely not on a motorized bicycle, they're in their car running around. So it's just something that I'd like you to take in consideration for the kids under the age of 16, just to make sure they have an adult present with them if they're riding within the parks.
I mean, it sounds reasonable. I would like to at least consult with legal counsel and see if there's age discrimination or some reason why that couldn't be enforced?
And, I can't remember, because we've been discussing this for three months now, but I, it was either a conversation I had with a resident, or it was through an email, that a mom was not in, was opposed to something like this because she has a daughter who behaves herself, and if she's 13, minding her own business, following all the rules, now she can't ride her e-bike in the park because you have some, few bad eggs, you know? I don't, that's, that's a downside to that type of rule, so, again, I think I'd like to-
Just something maybe we can take in consideration, at least, that's what I ask, is consider the age, the age limit, because the age groups that we're having issues with are the younger kids that are unsupervised.
Okay, well, that sounds like we're going to continue this for another month.
Or two, or three.
Or two.
I do like the fact of PD Maintenance and Leslie working together to educate. I think education is key, that some of these parents may not realize that this is a real issue.
And we, and we have, you know, everybody has worked, but as we've all been finding out, again, June 30th was one of the last law changes, and probably by the time the spring hits, they're going to update a few more things. So, it's always evolving, and we're learning as we go, too, trying to continue to keep up on it and the tags, so we can all, we can all continue to try to work together for it.
Okay.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
Cemetery software. We discussed and shared information with the board last month on cemetery software, so we can get to this century on record-keeping for our cemetery software. Did you guys have any questions that myself or Donna could answer for you on the literature that we shared with you guys last month?
Yeah, I got a question, which is, who is going to administer it, maintain it, operate it? Maybe someone that has to understand the IT of this whole thing, right?
So the, the plan was, Dina Brown has kind of led the charge on finding this software. They would directly train Dina, she'd kind of be our lead person with that, and then she would also obviously train me and Brooke, so we can properly use the software as well. And then I would filter down to Nate Frye, my crew leader, I'd make sure he knows how to operate the software. Then there's three of us within the department that can actively and accurately run the software and read the software, as well as Dina.
And there's an annual fee, right?
There is an annual fee.
And what was that again? I can't remember.
$1,200.
Yeah.
$1,200.
Did you, last month, I had a question, because again, OTA is going to roll something out in January. Do we figure out contract? Is it just one year we held to?
So the thing that's unclear is, once they do the drone footage for us, if we can legally use that for another company. So that's, that's where we're getting that little bit of a hiccup right now.
And that's okay if that's, if we're stuck, I almost say stuck, but bound to this contract, because OTA's company can't do the drone. So, they wouldn't be an option for us, anyway.
UAN provides a service as well, along with the accounting package that we utilize here, but they do not have the ability to handle that type of, she, she told me, "Go find the Boy Scouts. Have them walk your cemeteries and indicate the coordinates and record it that way." Well, I don't think that, you know, that that would be a good option for us. Unfortunately, I know it does cost a substantial amount of money, but I think it is time that we get this, like Director Fitzpatrick said, up to this century, because it is all, looks like scrolls.
Yeah.
I mean, it really does look like scrolls.
Stone tablets.
And, and they're just, and they're starting to get to the point where you can't read them anymore because everything is deteriorating. Yes.
So how does the data get entered into the software? We have to manually take each and every grave site? And Dina's prepared to do that?
Yeah. I have, way back when, I had a very generic Excel spreadsheet where I went through and entered with the information that I had. I don't know if there's anything that they could do to, you know, sometimes computer management company that provides software like that can do a, like a conversion.
Conversion.
But ultimately, I do believe that that is going to fall on the township to get those entered and up and running, except for obviously the drone, where that will be taken care of by the Sims, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, what, we want to make sure that if we're going to invest in this, that the data gets uploaded in a timely manner, so you've got to put together some sort of program for Dina to- program for Dean and the...
And it's my understanding as well, the public will be able to search as well.
Yes.
Oh, really nice.
So it'll rely on just us, yeah.
It'll go into the public database where they can research ancestors and that kind of thing and be directed to where they are located.
Okay. I'll move to enter into an agreement with Cemetery Information Management for a Township Cemetery Software Package. Authorize the Township Administrator to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board of Trustees and authorize the Fiscal Office to issue a purchase order in the amount of $19,950. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Trustee McMurray?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Antoinette?
Yes, motion passed.
I'm going to actually take the first couple for Joe, if you guys don't mind.
Sure.
Back in 2015, when Joe was hired, he was hired at a, at a step rate above the normal personnel policy for your vacation accruals. A new employee starts in with two weeks vacation accrual for that first, for hire date through their fifth year. So he, Director Schaefer was hired in with three weeks. And since then, he has always carried vacation at one week above what the policy states. Unfortunately, only, we only get at reorg board authorization to increase that beyond what the policy has already been approved. Well, this year is his 10th year anniversary. So he has, August 15th, he celebrated his 10-year anniversary. So currently, right now, we only have a resolution on the books allowing him to have the four weeks vacation. So if we want to continue giving him that extra week of vacation, I would need approval of five weeks vacation accrual for him on August the 15th.
Okay, I move to authorize an increase of the annual vacation accrual for Development and Zoning Director position. Does it matter who it is? That would be Joe specifically, right?
Um, yes, we'll insert Joe.
Yeah. To 200 hours for beginning his 11th year of service. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Why does he have to carry a week above what he gets? I don't understand that.
So when he, when he came, it was negotiated that additional week for him. So that threw him out of the bounds of the normal personnel policy. So every year you guys approve the, the reorganization and it'll state Joe Schaefer, Director of Development and Zoning with X amount of vacation hours, which we have on the books for four weeks this year. But with his anniversary hitting in the middle of the year, he is eligible now to receive that additional week. I can't do that because the personnel policy won't allow me to and the board, the resolution on the books won't allow me to. So I need to have a resolution from the Board of Trustees approving that additional increase beyond what's allowable in the personnel policy.
Got it. Now that makes sense.
Sorry.
Quick, quick question. So within that policy, other folks that have similar longevity, would they also have that same allotted hours or is it just because of what was originally negotiated?
It's based upon original negotiations.
Okay.
Yes. Some individuals have a contract and then some of them just have additional negotiated in their initial hiring. His just opted and it came...
The timing, it's a timing issue.
Yeah, it's just a very strange with the timing issue.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll.
Trustee McMurray?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Antoinette?
Yes, motion passed.
Okay.
Can we do the other one?
Yeah, sorry. I thought I had the other one right below it.
Well, it probably makes sense for me to do this. So the next item, thank you for the vacation, by the way.
Do you have something planned?
Yes, yeah, it's, and she's right. We negotiated that as just a term of when Paul and I went back forth initially on salary and benefits and stuff. That was just something the board at the time agreed to. Unfortunately, I come before you this evening to ask you to accept the resignation of Deputy Zoning Inspector Rafiq Uden, effective today, September 10th. Rafiq informed me two weeks ago that his girlfriend has accepted another opportunity out of state. So he's moving out of state with her. So it's a good opportunity for him, his family. We certainly understand that. You know, regretful loss for us. Rafiq has fit in well here in the past six months. You could very much tell that he had prior experience doing this. It made getting him onboard and up to speed a lot easier. But we certainly understand the decision he had to make being best for his family. So I asked the board...
I move to accept the resignation of Deputy Zoning Inspector Rafiq Uden, effective September 10th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll.
Trustee McMurray?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yep.
Trustee Antoinette?
Yes, motion passed.
And I'll bounce it back to...
And then moving on to, at the last meeting, we discussed the job descriptions. Joe and I sat down, we reviewed this. There were no substantial changes. We did hit a couple bullet points that coincided with verbiage that we used from maintenance, seasonal and parks job descriptions that were approved earlier this summer. And then we added the ADA statement. So basically, the proposed description that you guys have received was almost exact what was put out at the beginning of the year when we were seeking to find Rafiq.
I move to approve the Deputy Zoning Inspector job description, effective September 9th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. None, roll.
Trustee McMurray?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Antoinette?
Yes, motion passed.
Thank you. And I guess just to piggyback on that, we did start running the ad for the, the position last week. Because it was an existing position, we're not changing the terms of really anything. The, the changes to the job, job description were not substantive. They needed to be made, but they didn't really fundamentally change the job. We went ahead and put the posting out. We've got a handful of applications in so far, about four or so. You know, we're taking a look at them and we'll, we don't have a deadline set for applications. We're going to just keep taking them and interviewing people until we can find the right fit.
Yeah, yeah, that's important.
So that's what we're seeing.
A few announcements. September 11th, Communication Advisory Committee. September 13th is the fishing day, Saturday. September 15th, Trustee Zoning Hearing. September 16th, Police Levy Q and A. September 17th, Police Advisory Committee Meeting. October 1st, Parks Advisory Committee. October 5th, Fire Prevention Open House. Is that at the firehouse? October 13th, Columbus Day Offices Closed. The next regular trustee meeting will be October 14th, 2025. I move to adjourn to executive session at 7:26 PM to consider a dismissal and/or discipline of a public employee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll.
Trustee McMurray?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Antoinette?
Motion passed. Be in executive session. Motion passed, be in executive session.